Welcome councillors, please stand. Welcome councillors, members of the executive and members of the public that have joined us via the live stream. Swan Hill Royal City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. Councillor Bennett, please.
We beseech you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the Royal City of Swan Hill.
Please be seated. Mr Bennett, do we have any apologies or any grievances?
No, Mr Mayor, all councillors are present.
Thank you. The directors and officers present, please.
Yes, we have Director Green, Petover, Leskey and Myers all present.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes. I can have a move of the minutes of the scheduled meeting of council held on the 7th of November 2020 and the unscheduled meeting of council held on the 7th of November 2020, be confirmed please. Yeah, move that. We have councillor Bennett, second to councillor Bennett, there is a favour. Dislosures of conflict of interest, any disclosures of conflict of interest on today's agenda? Any joint letters and reading of petitions?
No, there are none contained within the agenda.
Any questions for public question time?
No, none were submitted, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Open forum, it's time to deal with it this time. Do you get to know open forum? Thank you. First item in section B reports. Item B20.95, planning permit application for the use and development of a convenience restaurant at Subway, alteration to access to a road zone category one and associated business identification signage located at 71 to 77 Bromley Road, Robinvale. Let's go on to this.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to give a very brief history of how we've got to today. The land was privately owned land, two lots and had two houses on the at point stage. Council has purchased both lots over a hundred years, most recently about three years ago, the second lot. The council bought the land for strategic purposes, possibly for community use, possible for tourist use, but for some sort of development at a future stage. It did enable, by council purchasing the land, did enable council to ensure that that land was developed in future. Council was approached by developers at Subway and went through the local government act process to sell the land when it was available for open, was it tender? Anyway, it was certainly open for anyone to apply to purchase the land. Council decided to sell the land for commercial use and it certainly was not, the intention was not to purchase the land for consolidation. That might have been an option, but it wasn't the intent. The land is actually owned residential, it is surrounded by land that is public, either public or land used for public purposes. It is also surrounded by the land that surrounds is in a heritage overlay as well, like the land itself is not. Heritage load overlay does mean that there would be a permit required to demolish any of the buildings on the surrounding land. Or for any development on the surrounding land would require a planning permit. There are no other controls, no other heritage controls in the planning scheme. It is part of the CBD or the central business area, even though it is on the other side of Bromley Road. It does create an entry to the, to Robinvale particularly from the north. And has a variety of uses on that side of Bromley Road, from the CFA, police station, the visitor information centre, the museum. So a very eclectic grouping of uses and building design. Council can consider a commercial use in a residential site where it is on that main road and we see that name there. If it was in the middle of a residential area, council could not consider a commercial use on Aiden Night Road. The applications advertised and there was a significant number of objections received. And council last week heard from, I think, 16 or 17 objectors certainly putting a voice to their written objections. The report does go through in some detail a summary of those objections, but I just wanted to pull out a couple of, four of those. And that is, I think, the key ones, which is the site, it's not a suitable site for this sort of development. The issue of traffic, the issue of safety and the issue of character. So briefly address character and the character in this location is certainly not uniform. We have two modernish buildings in the police station and the CFA. We have the train station which is heritage listed, we have the museum which is shared. And we have the park. So it certainly is an eclectic visual appearance as you come in, but not untrapped. So it does create a nice entry to the town. From a traffic point of view, Vic Roads has approved this development on this site and the way the traffic would enter and leave the site. That body is the approval body for all those issues. They have required no right hand turn when coming to the north to minimise traffic issues. From a safety perspective, certainly concerns raised by objectors about people crossing the road. I have done a little bit of research and the number of vehicles on average on Bromley Road is about, just to give council this perspective, is about half that of Calum Street here in Swan Hill. And in terms of trucks, it's about a third of Calum Street. So that's just to give you a bit of perspective on the number of vehicles per day of people being crossing that road. There is a pedestrian refuge at Perrin Street, which I think will cross halfway across the rest. I understand that it's some hundred metres from the site. And the fourth one which I have mentioned is the site and the location. Certainly many of the objectors were concerned that it should be a community use or a tourism related use. From a planning perspective, well certainly we got requests for a community use on the site when we took the site for sale. From a tourism perspective, we do have the visitor information centre and the museum. From a planning perspective, a food premises there may in fact assist the growth and development of the museum by providing a customer base. It may actually encourage more people to stop and take another conference or so what about. The report does go into that in a bit more detail. Certainly from an economic perspective, the stimulus that injection of capital into the town. We're hoping will create confidence in further developing the town to grow even further. From a town planning perspective, it does meet the requirements of the planning scheme. It does meet the requirements of car parking. With some additional car parking being offered by the developer on council attached land, which will assist in providing car parking for the town as well as the park and for the bus. And the offering for a gazebo or shade structure of course subject to our requirements and location. The recommendation is that a notice of decision to grant a planning institute subject to a number of conditions as outlined on the page.
Thank you.
Thank you, page 75, good work. And I recommend that council proceed accordingly.
In this room, any questions councillors? Yes, councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You were just discussing the addition of the car park adjacent to the site. The long bay car parks that are proposed and the extra car parking there is not actually contained within 71 to 77 Bromley Road, is it?
That's right.
So is it a goodwill gesture by the developer and does it become a council asset or is it a private car park?
That's a goodwill gesture and becomes a council asset.
And is that the same as the gazebo that's proposed?
That's right.
Is that setting stone, the gazebo in McGinty Park or?
Oh, council could say, no, we don't want it.
Yes, if that was what the community wanted.
So the design has not been agreed to, it's just that there has been some sort of shade structure somewhere in the design and location.
Got a first, sorry, nobody else?
If council didn't own this land and we didn't acquire it when the opportunity arose, what would be the process from here if it was held privately?
Process would be the same, so.
Even if it was a residential?
To a car park, yeah. Probably a house wouldn't require a planning permit, maybe it was units or something like that. It would still require a planning permit and go to the same person.
So I guess my question is, if this wasn't acquired by council at the time, there could have been a house pop up there with no input from the community whatsoever? Thank you.
Any further questions councillors?
I've got one more, sorry. How far back, I think you mentioned it during your report, how far back is the restaurant situated from the Moore Street industrial estate?
So the rear boundary of the restaurant will be two meters, 20 to 30 metres from Moore Street, which is the, I believe, state residence.
Yeah, it's Moore Street crash repairs, which is the reason I ask. Isn't it, when you construct a spray booth, as Moore Street crash repairs have there, doesn't it need to be 100 metres away from residential building? How does that work with food premises?
Look, I don't know off the top of my head the distance, but they've got a properly constructed space, I think it should be okay.
Is there a last one?
Yeah, one that thinks that's all right, things should be okay.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
The additional car parking that's been done as a goodwill gesture, is that, were there any complaints about the size, shape or style of that or is it perceived that parking is something that's needed?
Certainly parking is needed in the area, both for the museum. And who, not lying, it would help this development, but the car parking on site meets the planning scheme, this would be additional car parking. Particularly the lot vehicle which they, of course they will help their development because it may well attract people with caravans and that sort of thing to park. But it certainly will help the balance of the town as well because people can pass them and look through down to Perrin Street.
Thank you. Would the entrance for that car parking, the goodwill car parking, I'll call it, be through where the, because I couldn't quite understand that, be through where the train station is and the tourism, the museum? Or will it be up at the main entrance of the subway? No, that's fine, I understand. I couldn't quite. Oh, so you could.
So it's, yes, it is the bus access and it's a one-way access.
So through the main entrance.
Not the entrance to the car park, it's not the entrance next to that.
Yes, the general entrance.
To the inner centre of the museum.
Yeah.
Further questions, yes. Councillor Jeffrey.
The purchase of 71 and 77 Bromley Road, how would I fund it? What the funded bucket that came from council to purchase those lots, is that funding allocated to Robinvale for strategic or is it a whole municipality bucket to purchase land throughout the municipality?
Council runs a land and buildings acquisition reserve, which is municipal wide, it's not broken up into regions and the funds to purchase this property would have come from that.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Bennett?
Yeah, I do have one more question, sorry. The traffic and the crossing of the road is a main concern as well as a bottleneck post Bromley Road reconstruction, which is a very valid. There are pedestrian links around this proposed development. Is there scope within council to advocate to Regional Roads Victoria for traffic lights or a safer pedestrian crossing down that end? Or are we and Regional Roads Victoria happy with the crossing at Perrin Street?
I would have said at least at the moment, we're happy with what's there and given the vehicle numbers and the ability to separate each up low cars. I guess in the longer term, particularly in training increases, as we get busier and more development, there's always an opportunity there for improved pedestrian access, whatever that means. Because there's a whole range of things you can do.
There's also been concern raised about the truck parking, trucks heading south, parking in front of the motel, which is an issue already. Is there a plan to address that issue or is there anything that council can do to help alleviate what will be perceived as a traffic congestion issue at least?
Because we're adding now, and it's just.
Correct, yes.
I'm not aware, is there, if there's any rule experience taken or proposed?
Well, apart from the long vehicle parking within town.
Yeah.
But if vehicles park on over, it's the chances of people.
Which does happen, but I understand they do park a lot.
Yeah, yes, the masses now. Thank you.
Can I just ask, from my memory of when they were going to buy the land, was one of the discussions was around the fact that Subway actually liked all their restaurants mainly to be on the main roads? And that they said they would not be interested in buying if it wasn't at that location because it didn't suit the immigrant of their market and what they wanted to do. Is that a correct memory?
It's a correct memory. They did look at, I think, two other sites on Bromley Road, but this was the preferred site because of that easy access. And they do rely on that passing trade, that opportunistic trade.
So if they didn't get that, they wouldn't come.
That's right. They certainly weren't interested in Perrin Street or the town in Perrin Street.
George Street.
George Street, certainly booked it. I considered them, but it's missing pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor Kim.
For trucks travelling north, what's the provision for parking for them? Are they to go in through the, into that proposed long bay parking you're talking about? Or is it parking on Bromley Road in front of the proposed development?
No, there's not. And if they're a small truck, they'd probably use that long vehicle access. They will park where they park now, which is further back near the police.
Near the police station, CFA, that area.
Yeah, CFA, which is what we're doing now.
Yep.
Councillor Kim.
Can you just discuss a little bit the traffic issues with turning right, the concerns and what the restrictions are?
So it's coming from the north, so over the bridge into town, they will not be allowed, vehicles will not be allowed to turn right into the car.
How will they access it if they want to?
So they'll either have to go further and do a U-turn.
Yes.
Further along Bromley Road and do a U-turn or park on Bromley Road.
Councillor Kim, do we have traffic council Bromley Road and what are they compared to Swan Hill Calum Street, which is someone?
We do. So Bromley Road, three and a half to four thousand vehicles per day, of which about 340 of those are trucks. Compared to Calum Street, which is about 10,000 vehicles per day, of which about 1,400 are trucks. That's in both directions, that's a really good job.
Any further questions, yes?
I'd like to move the motion as per the recommendation that council issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit. For the use and development of 71 to 77 Bromley Road, Robinvale for a convenience restaurant alteration to access to a road zone category one and associated business identification signage subject to following conditions and I'm not going to put all the conditions for that.
Thank you, hold on a second.
All thanks.
Mr Speaker, councillor.
I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. This has been an ongoing and contentious issue for almost two years now and there are many, many wrongs to this court. There are a number of arguments for and against, most of which are valid, some of which are not, we have that in every debate. As councillors and as council today, we're acting not with emotion or sentiment, however difficult that might be, particularly after hearing passionate objections and support. But as visionaries towards the future and as a statutory authority on the matter. Meaning, does this application fall within the parameters of the planning scheme? I and all councillors have taken on board all kinds of feedback, including formal written objections, letters of support, emails and conversations within the community. And we have these each and every day as part of our role as councillor. Our job now is that of a statutory authority to determine, again, whether it fits within the planning scheme. Obviously, we have to take into account all of the varying community feedback and formal objections and support of this application. But at the end of the day, we as councillors are elected representatives to make these decisions. This is a democracy and I'm a big fan of democracy, just in case you can't tell. I'm sure all councillors in this room respect that you have chosen me and the six other people in this room to make those decisions on your behalf. This is our job and we've all just been newly elected based on the fact that we support growth, progress and development. I respect the historical significance in the precinct of this site and I do empathise. But everywhere has historical value. There are no new, there are no new sites, there's nothing new. Everything has history and yes, it absolutely should be remembered, celebrated and respected. A new development in this area, I believe, will help to activate the whole area on the west side of Bromley Road, which could very quickly lead to the need for additions to McGinty Park that has been underutilised for many years. I've also said before that we as council need to stop jumping to no. If we deny the planning permit, whether or not it goes ahead, it sends a message to the private sector that Swan Hill Royal City Council is open for business. The area, and I'm talking about Robinvale as well as Swan Hill, the entire municipality is booming, particularly Robinvale out on the blocks. The economic development that is growing on vines and trees in Robinvale is incredible and the town does have some catching up to do. So this should be considered a green light.
Thank you councillor Bennett. Councillor Kim.
I've nothing further to add to councillor Bennett's comprehensive discussion.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to foreshadow a motion that I'll bring to the next council meeting should this planning permit be passed. That will be that the revenue received from the sale of land be used for the preservation of heritage in Robinvale. And also another additional notice of motion that council invest in improved highway signage for Robinvale CBD, particularly Perrin Street, just for the information.
Thank you.
I'd just love to say, on practical visits that I've had to Robinvale, new conversations to just to support councillor Bennett's motion. That most of the people that I've spoken to, in fact, the whole majority of the people that I spoke to, were in support of this initiative. And that included shopkeepers, cultural groups, individuals and different hospitality venues and general population. While they had slight reserves about things, I could see that it was going to benefit the Robinvale community in the long term. It's always difficult to look at a situation when it's only objectors that reply. And there's been some statements saying that, well, the other people should have taken to writing as well, but that wasn't a requirement, it was only objectors. but that wasn't a requirement, it was only objectors. So out of eight and a half thousand people, it was really only a very small percentage that did reply. So I think we're quite justified in thinking that there are a lot of people out there that support the initiative.
Thank you, Council Benham, Council Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak for the motion. Obviously, every planning decision that comes before us is a difficult decision and in this case, I have taken into the views of all the objections, both written and in the recording that I listened to of when the objectors spoke last week that I couldn't attend to. There is never a perfect location for every development that comes, that wants to come to our town. As much as we'd like there to be, there's always a few things that we have to allow a bit of deviance to in order to allow development to occur. And some of the main concerns, in particular the traffic flow and for this development is a bit of an issue, but there are people that I've spoken to up at Robinvale who didn't put anything in writing for or against. That was some of their concerns. The, well, I think with the growth of any town, there becomes a bit of driving behaviour that you grow. So a couple of days ago, I was, you know, to the Swan Hill as an example, I parked up around the Swan Hill K S A and the subway area just to observe the traffic there and thinking back when that all started to be developed was new traffic behaviour had to be accounted for. When you drive around town, whether you go to an intersection or visit a particular area at a time of day. And when we look at even some of the comparable businesses in town, in Swan Hill, that have moved from CBDs to the places like Nye Road, such as Burs and Swan Hill, the Stewer Shop, Swannaw Offroad and Harbour Norman dating back a while. There are businesses that the model is in today's age, they are relocating to areas that have a higher traffic turnover, not necessarily in CBDs. So I appreciate and undertake the concerns of the objectors and also the people that I've spoken to that are for development in Robinvale, they want this to go ahead. They have, do still have a few concerns on location and parking, but they want to see Robinvale progress. They want to see development happening and they want a sign of confidence in their town. So I'm all in favour of this planning permit, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Jeffrey, yes, just a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to apologise to all the objectors for not making the event the other night up in Robinvale. Unfortunately, you know, work commitment, but I certainly did listen to all those objectors when it was recorded and read their objections, each and every word. Thank you for their input in relation to this whole process. It has been a long and elongated situation. Planning is always a difficult situation. You can look at the planning strategies, as in law, there's always different interpretations of it. The objectors raised some objections in relation to their interpretation of the planning strategy. Our officers responded with their interpretation of the planning strategies. That's what strategies are about, it comes down to interpretation. I believe we've got to look at, as has been said before, the best economic benefit for the Robinvale community. I think if we can get more people to stop in Robinvale, the more money that can be spent in that town and will assist other businesses. Not only that, the model of Subway actually provides work for people in the town and their model also insists that they donate money back to non-for-profit organisations within town, whether it be the hospitals, sporting clubs, other facilities like that. So this is a win-win for everyone, I believe. I can go into each individual objection that part on its own. The traffic as indicated by the traffic count is nowhere near as much as people say. Traffic will do what they want to do. If they're going to park illegally, it comes down to an enforcement issue and that's where the local police have got to come on board. You're not going to stop that sort of behaviour. People, the parking is provided there for people, if they choose not to do that, there's nothing that council can do or anyone else can do if it's illegally what they're doing. But in closing, I'd like to thank the objectors for their passion in relation to this. They are very passionate about Robinvale, but obviously it's not in sync with the council at this stage. I certainly do hope that they contribute into the future in Robinvale because I will certainly listen to them, as I'm sure every other councillor around this table will continue to listen to the people of Robinvale and right throughout the municipality because that's what we need to do. But in the end, it is our ultimate decision and I think granting this permit is the best economic result for Robinvale. And in closing, don't forget, either party, whichever way this goes, is, I've not got an opportunity to apply to recap if they so choose. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Benham, any further speakers for the motion?
I'll speak. Although I didn't originally vote for the sale of land and I would vote against it again, I am reluctant to vote against the planning permit on the grounds that I don't think it's the right thing to do to a developer to give them the impression that they can proceed and this was a previous decision of council. So in, as far as that doesn't encourage people to invest and that goes from small right up to large, we need to assist people to invest in their businesses in our region and not discourage them, whatever my personal opinion might be about the exact history of this development. I know that all the councillors here are very committed to Robinvale and that's been shown along the way and I think by investments in the last twelve months and that is a great thing to see. I also am a believer that we need to elevate all the beauty that's in our town and I really sympathise with the people who have objected to the development in the location where it is. But I have always been able to see the positives and the negatives. What communities find difficult is when they've been working towards something and then that is altered and changed, not along with where they thought the council was heading. So I'd encourage us all to continue our commitment to Robinvale, it doesn't need to always be a secondary town and work towards it having that aesthetic appeal, its livability and its improved services and infrastructure that we all know it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Council King. There being no speakers against the motion, we'll now go to a vote, all those in favour. Passed unanimously. Right and B twenty point nine six, domestic animal management plan, who's to it?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council has required the domestic animal management plan in accordance with the domestic animal management act and it has one from two thousand and seventeen, which includes the next year. This year, we're required by legislation to renew the actions and update the plan as necessary prior to the period of time which will happen next year. This report highlights some of the achievements we have in managing our domestic animals over the past year. Being the training of one of our authorised officers to implant microchips in cats and dogs, which has proved, and will continue to prove to be a thing to try and get more animals microchipped so that we can find their homes when they get lost at a significantly reduced cost than they will do. And the commencement of, well, almost the commencement of the establishment of the off-leash dog park at Townhill. Which council received some funding from the state government. The action plan has been updated and that is attached for council's review. The recommendation is that council note the review and the concept plan for the off-leash dog park. Make no amendments to the domestic animal management plan. Write publicly to the secretary of domestic jobs, please, in some ways, on the understanding of council that we will be preparing that new plan next year.
Okay, questions councillors, yes, Council?
Just a question on the funding for the off-leash dog park. It says in the notes that the project must begin by first January twenty twenty-one. So is the funding still valid, is that project going to be ready to commence by then?
So the first stage will largely just be fencing and some landscaping and ready, ready, ready.
Okay, great. Any further questions councillors, Council Benham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talking about the off-leash dog park for Swan Hill, has there been any progression with regard to an off-leash dog park in Robinvale?
It's certainly one of the things being looked at as part of the master planning for the Riverfront, which includes Centenary Park and McGinty Park, I'm not suggesting that we. There you go, but that's one of the things that we're looking at, hopefully being able to provide there in one, somewhere in one of the study areas. If not, then we have to look elsewhere if it doesn't work there. Yes, it's part of that planning, great.
Yes, question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to be one of those meetings, I'm afraid. The plan talks about cat traps and the increasing need for these. Is that increasing at an alarming rate and are there any trends with regards to hotspots where they're required?
There's certainly, I think people are more active in wanting to get rid of feral cats. There are certainly hotspots across the municipality where people, cat lovers, I don't think that's a term. But people who have lots of cats.
Yep.
And they certainly spend a lot of time trying to catch, just snuggles to, you know, two or three cats per craps as opposed to eight, twelve, thirty, forty cats. Wow. And usually it's neighbours of those people that want the cat traps and getting the chances. So it is a problem. I think, I'm not sure if it's a growing problem, but I think people are more aware of the ability to get cat traps. So there's more to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions councillors? Any questions, can I ask the new please?
Oh, maybe, that's further recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Jeffrey, do you have a second before this?
I'll second.
Council King, who's to speak to the motion, Council Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just quickly summarise it. There's a plan about the domestic animals that we have and how we treat and go about those in our municipality. And really the only thing I wanted to highlight was what Council Benham raised around cat traps. It's something that our community should know is available. We know particularly areas in streets and areas in our municipality, cats are a problem. People don't know whose cats they are, they're probably feral cats or someone who isn't looking after their cat properly. And they do, they are one of the biggest causes of wildlife, particular birds disappearing in our municipalities. So they are there, contact local laws, they're available and they're very pretty effective. That's all I had to say, thank you, just to back.
Nothing further to add?
Any further speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion, I do know, we're going to vote, always in favour, passed unanimously. Right and B twenty point nine seven, planning permit application for the use of the land for stone extraction in the farming zone at Coramalot and fifty-eight Parish of Island West, Kokamba, Morellie Road.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As councillors aware, this is an application by council for a extraction of, stone extraction of farming zone of Island West. Council at the moment, however, is not the owner, council is the responsible planning authority and has to determine this application. The application was received and advertised. The report does go through, know that it's a sixty-four hectare area, fifteen stages for extraction over fifteen minutes, between three hundred mils and six hundred mils of depth. The areas of concern we received from the objectors were really not about the extraction of the stones, but how it needs to be transported out. The concern is about the impact on local roads and the safety issue could largely be major concerns. The, all the roads, the department has highlighted all the roads can be used, but it's likely that the roads from the north are extractive and not be the one mostly used. But other roads will be used where the extracted material will be required to improve roads to the south, to the east and west. There is a work plan that's been approved by the state government, which has a list of conditions as well around, largely around the quarry site itself, how it should operate, being re-improved, lots of structures complete. The recommendation is that a legislative decision to grant a planning permit is to, subject to a list of conditions. And that is my recommendation to that.
Questions, councillors? I would think I'd just.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Council Benham. How big is the, or was the extraction point on Tunggola Road?
Do you mean the?
The little, yeah.
The existing point? I don't know how big it is, but if you look at the plan on page fifty-four, it's the area of the same value and there is the.
Oh no, I'm talking about the one on Tunggola Road, the current one. How big is that and how long has it been operating? And how long will we get out of it? Might be a question for infrastructure perhaps, no? Now, this is another question, I don't know really who to direct this one at, but this comes within, I suppose, the earthmoving industry. Is it true that there's a limestone shortage at the moment and it's hard to come by?
Certainly hard to come by, I believe, because it's, it's really, so the council has to find locations for extraction.
Okay. Couple more, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that in mind, is this pit for council use only or is it for other private, other private contractors for council work? Or how does that, how is that managed?
It's for council use only.
One more, and again, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this or not. In the long term, how does a removal of limestone affect the soil quality for future agricultural use? Because we're all always, you know, being told to protect agricultural land, et cetera, et cetera. How does it benefit or adversely affect the soil quality?
No, I'm not an expert in this. I'm an expert on many things. My understanding is that once it's removed, the toxins are removed in place and it then can be farmed. It actually enables the area to be farmed.
That's all the questions I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council King.
Oh, sorry, no, that's, I apologize, please go ahead, Council Benham.
The site currently, it's not being currently farmed at the moment?
And not where the.
The pit is.
Not where the limestone is, yes.
And second question is, Kokamba Morellie Road is a bus route? School bus route?
Yes. As of a couple of months ago, yes.
It means where there's children, the bus routes change.
It needs to be though.
On page fifty-three, it says, material will only be extracted to service road-to-road shoulder repairs within the local area and demand will be variable depending on maintenance schedule. That's, that's in the report, but it's not part of the planning permit, is that correct? So it could be that it was sold privately without changing, is it part of the planning permit that it's?
If that's part of the application that we submitted, it's part of the payment because of the requirement to meet the application I can submit.
Thank you.
Even though there's not a condition specifically, but it's, it's part of the application submitted, so that's what we're approving.
Sure.
All enough.
Any further questions, Council?
Yes, in the statutory endorsed work plan, they do have a community consultation process that they document there and the community largely brought up the issues about the increased traffic and heavy traffic and implications. I'm not sure why, or I don't really understand why that risk wasn't included in the work plan. It may be because of the, it's not a legal requirement, but given that that was the issue most identified, I found it surprising that it wasn't included as a risk. And it said the traffic impacts will be low, but depending on need at times, it seems that the traffic could be very heavy.
Is that a question, Mr. Mayor?
So should it be included in the statutory endorsed work plan?
Council does an issue of work plan, the state government issues the work plan. Clearly they said that it's okay.
Yes.
Probably is an issue that should be dealt with in the planning plan rather than the work. Probably is an issue that should be dealt with in the planning permit rather than the work plan.
And it is true that we do have the ability to deal with it in the planning permit, don't we? Although it hasn't been recommended. Thank you.
Councilor Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, one of the main, or the strongest part of the objections Beverly met with the objectives on site was the use of the Kocamba Morelli Road. Um, the increase in truck traffic with parents taking kids to school, et cetera, and how narrow the road is. What, starting it out there and given the native vegetation restrictions, what would be good looking at? If in the future, what are the restrictions of widening that road to make it more of a two lane road than a single, uh, one and a half equal wide road? What are the restrictions around that?
Currently it's a B double group road, so it is, it is wider. Um, certainly nice improved roads while widening, improving shelters, trimming vegetation. Um, and that would be monitored by the applicant, um, to see that is required to be done based on traffic.
A question. Through the increase in traffic won't further native vegetation trimming and upkeep of the road? Given that with just the increase of traffic expected for this planning management?
I don't know if that's the answer, and if it does, it will, it may require further planning protocol depending on the standard by law.
Mr Green, um, any road damage or road widening that's, would be addressed through the road management plan? Our car road management plan?
That's right.
Which you mentioned, yeah.
Yes.
So any, any need?
This is a unique situation given it's a council application.
Yeah.
As much as we try and treat this as if this is a private sector application coming in, the reality is that the road gets harmed in any way. Council is in a position to be able to improve the road, you know, instead of getting graded once a year, it might get graded three times. It's keeping in good shape.
Yeah, and that's all addressed through the road management plan, because of the parameters we're putting through the road management plan. Um, is it true that limestone is the best available stone, uh, for us in this municipality locally?
Yes.
Going further, right. Uh, in a geographical sense, the location of the pit in terms of the north side, is it correct that, um, the pit is roughly in the middle of the municipality?
I, I believe that's the case and, and my understanding is that most of the, um, stone will be picked north.
Yeah, north.
But there will be some at times need for it to go south, east or west.
And west, yeah, yeah. Uh, in terms of an east-west, it's probably, is it true that, um, it's about two thirds, two thirds of the municipality is actually to the west? Is that correct? Okay. Any further questions? Yes, Councilor King.
I, I was going to move the recommendation, move. Is there any further?
Motion?
Yeah.
Further, yeah?
I, I move as per the recommendation, but with the addition of the following two conditions. One, that transport to and from the site be limited to the northern route utilizing fire access road to the Mali Highway, except in the event that the material is to be used on local roads founded by the Nai West Chinkabook Road, the Mali Highway, Murray Valley Highway and Sea Lake Robben Vale Road. The local near, nearby roads may be used, however, in which case the council will inform local residents of maintenance of these local roads. And two, the intersections of fire access road with the Mali Highway and Morelli Kocamba Road must be permanently signed, warning of heavy traffic. Said permanent signage.
Yes, Councilor King.
Oh, I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have to speak to the motion?
Yes, please. Um, we have a choice here to make, we can, the fi, um, fire access road to the north has no residences on it. Um, it has no significant agricultural improvement, so it's not in regular local use. Uh, this means that our activity, our council activity of increased trucks, we can choose the route that has the minimal impact on the activities of the people who live there. And I encourage the other councillors to include these conditions. Um, as has been said, that a, a lot of the stone will be going north and going west. So the economic implications of us, um, designating this route as being the route for stone to exit will not have, um, the, it won't impact economically on all the transport from that area, but it will impact significantly on the safety of the people using that road. Um, many people talk about people's right to farm and farming is changing and there are developments on that road. But there is also the ongoing use of the farmers who've been there for a long time and their families. Uh, it is correct to say it is an approved B double route use road. However, that use is intermittent and not as frequent as it will be if we allow, allow the traffic to go in any available direction. Um, there is nothing as devastating as fatalities on roads and they have occurred. And they do incur with increasing frequency when you have heavy traffic on roads that are not made for frequent heavy traffic combined with other uses. So I encourage us very strongly to use these conditions. This is our development, it's for use across the whole municipality, but the traffic will impact the people who live in that region, in that area in particular. Um, we also have stone through developments, almond developments, where there are a lot of workers. And we know that workers are coming from other countries and other places. They're using rural roads that they're not familiar with. And this increases the danger already on these, um, unbit, not bitumenised rural roads. So the people who live there are already dealing with this increased traffic. I encourage us to do the safe thing. We're supposed to, the, a, part of planning is to prevent problems. And I think that we can do this by supporting this, these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor King.
Sir, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, the main concern for the objectives in this application was the fact of safety and the increased traffic in the area. Um, the objectives are farmers themselves and they are aware that they need, or we need the limestone to maintain our roads to the standard that, that they are. Um, this is going to add very little expense to council in the respect, it's about a four mile, I believe, travel north to Mali Highway. If you had to travel back south, you don't need another four mile. So it's adding no great cost to council. Council already pay these contractors who deliver this product by the hour, not by the load, not by anything else. So there, there's no reason for them to rush, there's no reason for them to hurry. So we're trying in that respect as well, at a cost to council to make our road network safer for the people that do use it. The farmers, as I said before, are in agreement with this bit, they're happy to have the bit there and they know that their main concern was the, um, the safety along the Kocoba Morelli Road. And I think by keeping the trucks off at as best we can and the most times as we can, we achieve the best outcome for everyone. And I think this is an appropriate, um, motion to add that we direct the traffic or the trucks from this quarry north to the Mali Highway. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Further speakers for the motion?
Before I speak, Mr Mayor, could I just clarify or just, just, uh, spell check of another motion, I think? Uh, order correct, I've selected prenatally instead of permanently on second option. Just want to make sure that's right before we.
Very good. Councilor Jeffrey, yes, I know I wasn't right. Did I really do that?
No, you're right. It's always hard on twenty people watching. Uh, I'll speak for Mr Mayor for happy. Is that correct? Uh, yeah, I'm in favour of, of issuing the planning permit with the, uh, those three conditions around the use of the road. Uh, I've been able to note that it is on page fifty nine in response to the objectives use of the, um, Morelli Kocamba Road, that it states that I will, for majority of the trucking traffic coming out, we will use the fire access road. But this for, uh, for peace of mind for the local farmers and for the objectives and the safety they've, they've used, puts it into a bit of a tighter framework that fire access road will be the main road unless those certain provisions around serves in Nai West or Chinkabook or to the west, um, are required. So happy to support that as put forward, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers for the motion? Councilor King.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion.
Yes.
That, um, uh, that the recommendation be adopted, uh, as it is, uh, without the proposed one and two, um, amendments to the motion. Does that make sense?
So go back to the original.
Go back to the, sorry, to go back to the original recommendation.
Without one and two?
Yes.
Need a second for it?
Yes, we'll need a second for that. Can we have a second? Nope, we don't have a second, sorry. Uh, we're back to the substantive motion. Any further speakers against the motion? For the motion? Who put the motion, all those in favour? Carry it in this way. Item B twenty point nine eight, use and development of land for the purpose of group accommodation in farming zone, Royston Road, Tolto. Mr Green again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, the proposal is for the construction of four units cabins, um, on the one four hectare property to house workers, um, who will be working on properties in the vicinity. Um, the report goes into quite a bit of detail about what the planning scheme says in relation to these matters, but I just really wanted to hone in on some of the key concerns. And one is the closeness of the proposed development to the house on the adjacent property. Um, it is, um, very close to that to have workers accommodation that close for the amenity of the owner of that house, but also for the amenity of the people living in the, um, the workers living in the accommodation. Being very close to the packing shed on the adjoining property. Um, we do try and encourage worker accommodation to be somewhere where, um, the amenity of those workers to allow them to, um, not suffer light and noise during their night and day, they are trying to sleep. Um, that's some concerns. Um, also, all worker accommodation that has been approved is usually, well, it has and always is associated with a farm. That is, it's located on the farm on which the workers will work. Um, this is not the case, this is an isolated block, um, of a separate title that's not associated with the farm. Um, we did work with the applicant to try and get them to consolidate it with the farm. Um, so that it was associated with the farm, but that was refused and council raised that question with the applicant. Uh, when we met with the applicant, uh, to help explain. Um, the site was only recently purchased, um, by the owner for, um, for assumed his purpose. Um, so there is also the opportunity for that site to be farmed. Um, so the fact that it hasn't been farmed for many years doesn't mean it couldn't be farmed at a stage even. So the locational worker accommodation could be perhaps more appropriate located for the amenity of the job leader or the amenity of the workers, um, and also for it to be located on the property which the, um, the workers will be working on. Um, there are a number of V cap cases that support that view and these are summarised in the report. And the recommendation is that council issue a notice of, um, decision to refuse the application, which refuses to grant a plan it, um, or group accommodation farming zone, the Royston Road, Tolto. For reasons part large of that in that written motion.
Thank you, Mr Green.
Two questions please, Mr Mayor. Uh, Mrs Green, if the land total was consolidated with the larger farming area surrounding it, would this application be approved under councillor officer's allocation or would it still come to us because of the kind of issues around?
We would, we would still be concerned about the closeness to the shade of the house, but it would be one reason. It would give it a tick and I, I guess the answer is no, yes.
Yes. Um, I'll go ahead for a second question, thank you, Mr Mayor.
I have a few questions, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, thi, this applicant, it states that he owns a hundred and twenty acres, I think it's in hectares, is he? Yeah. Um, do you know if he, if they own, uh, more farmland in other parts of the district?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. Um. In comparison to Church Road, there's a comparison, um, between the Church Road development, yep, in, within the report. And it states that the units there are more than a hundred metres away from the vines or the sheik.
The sheik.
Okay.
For the, for the amenity of the workers.
Right. Okay, I must have misread it because when I looked at that. Yes, and very close to the vine, so I just wanted to ask.
Okay, how many metres is from the sheik?
Okay. Um, another question about the report, on page one hundred and twenty seven, the second last paragraph, it states furthermore, the proposed accommodation is not compatible with strategy two point two as it will result in further fragmentation of agricultural land and the continued slow eroding of the area towards a rural residential character. And I'll stop there. Do you believe this on one hundred and twenty seven?
Not sure.
Yeah, oh, sorry, eighty seven, hundred and twenty seven. Sorry. Um, I just wanted to question that logic with regard to the eroding of agricultural land in the Tolto and Robben Vale Irrigation District. Do you believe that to be true?
Look, uh, any residential use of rural land takes it out of production. Now, I, I, which is why I mentioned before, the boss hasn't been in production for a number of years. That's because it's been an isolated block, only dependent on a lot of, um, outs. In theory, it could be farmed, maybe not so consolidated, it certainly could be farmed, it's no doubt it could be farmed. Now, whether it will or won't, it's, um, depends on this application of this. And so it, it's probably not a prime case, you're right, but it certainly is a legal case. It's only got four hectares.
I have one more question, please. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Are you aware of why consolidation is not an option if it would avoid the whole woodmore?
I can only tell you what would have been told by the applicant is that the land loses value.
But increases value with a building permit, a planning permit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor King.
Hey, um, Mrs Green, there's a house next to a two which is sort of excised from the other property.
Yep.
Who owns that property?
Um, it's, it's.
Someone else, a member of the.
It's an independent person who's not a farmer, so he's like a regular property.
How did we come by having these two small blocks with different titles in this area? And when did it happen, do you know?
It's a very long time ago, twenty plus years. A council decision at the time, the household decisions were, none of them were. Even though it's not ours, it's.
Yes, Councilor.
Uh, I've just got a question, Mr Mayor, around the Subara operation. When you're talking about the dwelling, are you talking about the dwelling that's, um, down towards the bottom, which is right alongside where that development is?
Yes.
Is that the dwelling that you're talking about?
Yes, so that's the dwelling owned by the farm, farmer or the landowner. So the, um, worker accommodation is near the farm manager's residence.
Well, that says it's seventy eight metres from the closest cabinet, it's definitely not seventy eight metres. It's right alongside.
It's right alongside. Is the arrow's pointing to the north?
No, that's where the group accommodation is, where that arrow is, but that, that residence is right alongside.
But my understanding, it is part of the farm, so the amenity issue is not as great as if it's a separate ownership. Or you've got no control over what happens in the worker accommodation. You're part of the same ownership, you've got control over what happens in the worker accommodation.
So when you're talking about rural industry, you're not talking about plantings and, and activities with sprays and things like that? So when you're talking about rural industry, you're not talking about plantings and, and activities from sprays and things like that?
No, it's the, it's the packing, it's the trucking, it's those sorts of things primarily. Now, I'm not saying that the impact of the agricultural, you know, like the spraying and picking is not a part of that, but the noise associated with the truck movements and lights on.
Yeah.
Is potentially greater than, um, the agricultural impacts.
Thank you. Um, just to be quite clear, Ms Green, if this application gets successful, um, there's nothing to drop the current owner, just reselling it with permit and potential cash flow. Is that right? And have nothing to do with the farm whatsoever? Or in supply labour to the farm? Okay, thank you. Any further questions, councillors?
Yes, councillor.
Move the motion.
Yes, councillor. I move the motion as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor, um, including a boot for the residents.
Oh, second thought.
Councillor Jeffrey, just to speak to the motion, councillor, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I'll, um, it's in the report, but the, um, the V cap decision back in two thousand and thirteen between Burke, Finn and the Galway City Council. Talk about a small size of property that should not raise expectation, the small size of the property should not raise expectations that the land is suitable only for rural lifestyle, lifestyle dwelling. But otherwise the case that has been put to me about this property. What the applicant is asking here is that, um, there's no safeguard in this situation that, as some of the questions have been raised, the applicant could sell this off to someone private industry or private enterprise anywhere and it has nothing to do with the farming enterprise. A lot of the discussion today was around the consolidation into a lot and that will be considered by all means. I think the way it is now, decisions that have been made in the past, these, um, decisions where, where it was excised some thirty years ago, planning changes has continually changed. We've got to ensure that we protect our land for, to ensure that we have accommodation for our agricultural workers. By building these sites on a standalone piece of property with its own title does not, um, guarantee that into the future, there's no safeguard in relation to that. I think this is an inappropriate, um, use and I would, I personally would fully support. If this was consolidated, I could see that into the future, I would accept this, um, application. But as it stands now, there's no guarantee that it will remain as an agricultural support. The issues we have with accommodation in Robbenvale now is great, it's going to get greater and this isn't resolving it at all. If he was really true and fair about resolving issues with accommodation for his workers, he would have able to make the properties and wouldn't be in this position. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, please. Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah, oh, yeah, full of support. Those arguments put forward, that the, the risk here is, as councillor McPhee said, they, they, if they were to get this permit and they'd built their four, um, little units on it and sold it to someone in Melbourne who wanted to private, who wanted it as a rural holiday park or something, who knows? They could do anything with it, therefore it has the potential to be a business that operates in a farming area that could lead, we say it all the time, that residents complaining about farming practices of spraying it all hours and spraying chemicals into the, over the clotheslines, et cetera. That, that the complaints that inhibit the farmer from doing what they need to do and that is to water farm. So the, if the applicant was to consolidate their lots and put the same proposal up, um, obviously better support in a way than that. Um, we know that with the exorcising of houses from rural, uh, rural land, that it is seeing an increase in farmers' rates because what might be a hundred thousand dollar house excised off the block being fully renovated turns into a half a mil, three hundred dollar property and boosts the capital growth within that area for the farmer, which sees their farming rates increase due to the increase in value property. So the, it, that, um, against the proposal to put it on an individual title and the applicant should consider consolidating the farming blocks. Uh, but do know that, um, accommodation is typical for, for farming blocks, but there's a right, a right way to go about it and the wrong way, so, um, I fully support the motion as put up. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Yes, councillor, yeah.
Yes, I'd like to speak against the motion. I believe that we should grant a planning permit subject to conditions. And my reasons for this are that I believe, as stated, this application has no objection to the council building, engineering or health departments and there are no foreseen financial implications to council to develop and proceed. There's no doubt that the horticultural industry is the biggest industry and economic contributor within the Swan Hill region. The farm zoning purchase is about providing for the use of land for agriculture, encouraging retention of productive agricultural land and ensuring that non-agricultural uses do not adversely affect the land for agricultural use. Given that the accommodation for workers goes hand in hand and will assist with these purposes and not detract from them, it should then be approved. The issue of suitable and safe preferred accommodation is one that has been around for many years. There have been many unsuccessful initiatives to attract industry labour around training and education, bringing unemployed in city population here, attracting older gray nomads and others to our region, creating programmes with our Pacific neighbours and encouraging locals to work in the industry. They haven't solved the issues or provided the needed labour on the required scale. There are also big issues around visa applications, refugee and student status and gaining permanent residency. We as a council need to look at ways that we can provide the needed accommodation to the industry while ensuring the safety of the workers. Over the last term of council, we have in various ways tried to clean up the many abuses of the system by shutting down some facilities. In some cases, they simply reopen and the last thing we want is another child abuse. We still do have many substantive facilities with many people jammed into houses and sheds because there are not enough adequate places for them to go to. In contrast to that, there are many very good facilities that are built on farming land where happy, safe and content labour is accommodated. There are also many operators wanting to update, build and develop facilities. We should encourage and not discourage the provision of this suitable accommodation. The examples of this accommodation on farming land has not led to a consequence of a need for more community and physical infrastructure away from dedicated rural living areas, as been stated. Many travel to closer areas to gain supplies and mix with others on a short term basis but happily live on or around the farms. The main seasonal labour supply for manual components of the industry is mainly provided by nationalities that are keen to work many hours, earn as much as they can to send home to their families while working toward gaining permanent residency. As we know, there are not many counted in, there, there are many not counted in the census figures, so figures are distorted. While there has been a view put forward that accommodation is better provided within the urban areas, I believe that the farming community and workers would prefer this to be within the farming locations close to their places of employment. Why is this? This eliminates travel time, allows more working hours and provides better safety for workers. We may need to take a trip early morning around the main horticultural areas to see the many cars, many buses and other vehicles transporting workers to the district farms to see the size of the issue. We should allow this application for accommodation with conditions that will assist in meeting any identified issues or problems that could arise without the need to consolidate the tariffs. Any development of accommodation in horticultural areas should be seen as having a connection to the activities in the area and not just on the property in question. Arguments are that the owners will sell off the land. Realistically, will they? I think not. Not if it provides badly needed workers for their farm. The Subara farm accommodation is very similar to this application. This has been allowed because there is a desperate need for facilities like this to be provided throughout the region. Um, the brief state, it's the nearest cabin, no, sorry, not that, the house is, um, a certain distance away and this is not correct. The farming activity is close to the facility at the property and adjoining properties have been seen as having no negative impacts and no objections from the neighbours. We should and need to approve this application to allow development of appropriate accommodation facilities throughout the Swan Hill rural city region and to demonstrate to the state government that this is an illustration of what is required to support the growth of the industry and not a detraction from it. We need to also push further the changes in planning and zoning laws to allow realistic options for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bill.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We talk about strategy two point two and three point one, et cetera, et cetera. But I want to talk about the growth and, the growth strategies of the growers in our region. I realise that this particular planning permit is a gamble, but I, I'd hope that we can trust in our people so that they can trust in us. Maybe it's a historical issue, I, I'm not sure. But as mentioned in the first item of the day, our agricultural industry is booming and growing, not eroding as I interpreted the report to suggest, um, in places. And that's just a, again, interpretation issue, I suppose. And, uh, the industry needs accommodation to support this. We've been banging on about this and advocating to all other levels of government, um, for a long time, so I believe we should be supporting this. Remember, it's a planning permit, um, and we're the state authority, so the fact that it's also people's livelihoods shouldn't be part of the decision making process, I suppose, as hard as that is to remove yourself. What should though, is the housing and labour shortage that we're faced with as we speak. And we know that it's great, as councillor Young, um, and as other councillors have mentioned. As council, again, we should be assisting and helping growth to occur, not hinder it. The only issue here, or the main issue, is that it could be sold off as a rural lifestyle block. Uh, but I personally am also of the opinion that we need more of those too. Maybe not in this setting, as close to, uh, the farmland and, uh, the farming infrastructure as this. However, if this permit wasn't to be granted, I would also fully support it if the block was consolidated with the shed.
Thank you, councillor Bill. Any further speakers against the motion? Would you like to close, councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, look, the question is here is, um, I don't dispute that, uh, there is a housing shortage in Robbenvale, there's a housing shortage for our workers up there. But this is a planning issue before us. If you start setting a precedent now, the next application will come in and it just snowballs. We end up with all those little developments in the middle of nowhere. And the thing is, you look at what farming zone is about. The purpose of the farming zone is to provide for the use of land for agriculture, the prime bottom line. Having it's this piece of land of its own title does not guarantee that that land will continue to be used for agriculture. It's just stubbornness, I believe, on behalf of the, on behalf of the applicant not to consolidate it. Councillors around this table said they would support it if it was consolidated because that guarantees that there's no future sale of that one block on its own. I think that alone, we've got to look at it as a planning thing. It's not about whether we trust the people, it's, we'd love to be able to trust everyone, but this is a planning issue. We've got to look at it simply as a planning issue and this is inappropriate use of that block. There's no guarantee that it will remain as an agricultural asset into the future. That's what we've got to ask ourselves and I believe that's what we've got to stick by now, councillors.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor McPhee. There is no further vote, we'll go to a vote.
I'd just like to close, you should. I can do that now?
Uh.
Councillor McPhee has closed the vote. All right, we'll go to a vote, all those in favour of the motion? Close against the motion? Motion is lost. Now the move, please.
Can I have, uh, move, uh, that option two, we grant the planning permit for development of work.
Option one.
Sorry?
Option one or two.
Hmm.
Please speak to the motion, councillor.
I think I've said everything in my, uh, original statement, thank you, Mr Mayor, but I do believe that with all the advocacy that we do do to industry, to all other levels of government and, uh, bureaucracy that we have to deal with in other agencies, I think too, I realise that it's a gamble and I realise the consequences of what can happen. Uh, but I think that, uh, in the short term, trusting that workers accommodation will be developed here, um, it could be a good solution pretty quickly, so, um, for that reason, I do support it.
Thank you. Councillor, yeah?
Um, I'd just like to say that, um, I believe that we already have a lot of facilities right through the Robbenvale region that we don't even know that they're there. And at least by giving out the right permits and planning permits at the right time, we will at least have more control over what is actually happening out there. And the second thing I'd like to say is, um, with the COVID situation, this has, uh, become a bigger, more, I suppose, dramatic, you could say, situation if, if that should happen again. So one thing we need to do is to create a more competitive advantage to attract workers to our region. And the main element in this is better and appropriate accommodation. So we need to approve the application so that we can get that happening with better accommodation and attract more, more workers to our region. Thank you.
Councillor, yeah? Any further speakers for the motion?
Um, I, I think it's a, a sad thing that we've got such a problem with accommodation. It's been identified in several reports and unfortunately people are left in this situation where they can't make, keep their workers because they don't have accommodation. And I guess I'm talking about the wider issue. But we all see the problem with people being isolated out on farms, but we also have to appreciate that, um, agricultural businesses have problems keeping workers there and housing them properly and safely when there's such a shortage in the whole municipality and the town of Robbenvale, in addition to Swan Hill. Uh, I would encourage us as a council to be more activist in getting larger accommodation that is either assisted, funded or, um, supported by us. Because as we heard when we went to Robbenvale the other day, when they need to lift their production in the middle of the summer, we are going to need more accommodation. So I can't really deny this application, but I would encourage us to, as we say that we do on occasions, when the market doesn't, um, fill the space, sometimes we do have to be more active. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor.
I'll speak against the motion, Mr Mayor. Um, look, I agree wholeheartedly, we need more accommodation up there. But you've got to think, councillors, the number of, um, provisions you've got to put in there, conditions you've got to put onto it. The more conditions you need to put to a planning application, you've got to ask yourself, is it appropriate to have it? You're trying to make the, um, situation fit the planning scheme, not the planning scheme fit the situation. And some, and I've got no doubts in my mind that this will be built as a accommodation for workers. But planning is about not the next five, ten years, it's about twenty, thirty years' time. What's going to happen to this block in thirty years' time? What's going to happen to farming in thirty years' time? You look at the Arman Farms now, how they're going to, um, truckers that are driven by computers. Are we going to get to a stage where we're not going to need employees, if the whole industry is going to change? These are the questions we've got to ask ourselves, or we're, now, yes, they need workers now. But we're, as far as planning goes, that's a question we're asking ourselves here, is planning. Not about worker accommodation as such, it's a separate title, but intermingled, but it is separate. The fact that this is a separate title, who's to say in, when this, um, farmer decides he always got to be out, big crop at the moment, doesn't need any more worker accommodation, he just sells it off? That's the question you've got to ask yourself. When planning comes into the situation, it's not about the next five or ten years, it's well into the future to look at as well. And I don't think it's appropriate, if you want accommodation for your workers, it should be on your farm, not a separate title.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor McPhee. Any speakers, yes, councillor.
Uh, I'll speak against this, Mr Mayor. I think councillors should really consider the implications and the precedents that approving this planning permit as it is will have, both considering the precedence of this happening scattered throughout the whole municipality and the difficulty in controlling that. And as councillor, councillor McPhee has said, around those little rural lost, rural blocks that house three or four to twelve people that aren't close to any services, be it medical transport, food or any, um, uh, other health related services. They're in the middle of nowhere, but not many people know they are and how they've been treated. Um, the, we know other municipalities such as Mudgeer a few years ago lost their powers as a planning authority because of inappropriate development happening across the municipality. Um, if, by setting the precedent, other farmers who may have little individual blocks that they can develop into housing areas, sell off the farm and, and hold on to that and want, want a residential, you know, a holiday park, what can they make out of it? Because they own the block and it's not tied to the farm. Um, we have been advocating to the state authorities around, uh, proper planning provisions for rooming houses or doggos on farm and that's on farm's own land, that is the same title as what their farm is, not a separate block next door that isn't linked to the farm. Um, and we will continue to advocate that to ensure that we have proper development. This isn't proper development and we shouldn't be granting this application.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers for or against the motion? Before everything not being any, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is lost.
Well, Mr Mayor.
Was persuaded by the applicants.
Well, I asked for a move.
Why ask for a move, please?
I'll move a motion as per the original recommendation of the report, which is to refuse the planning application.
Yeah, the original was to refuse.
Yeah, refuse the planning application.
Okay. Since this has already been debated once, we'll just go to a direct vote. Councillors? Sorry, a second, please. Second, councillor McPhee. This has already been debated with the approval of councillors. We go straight to a vote. Okay, those in favour of the motion? Those against? The motion is carried. Item B 20.99, provision to supply and delivery of concrete, sorry, in which must products, panel of providers. Mr McCarver, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With setting up panels of providers, it meets our procurement requirements. We have predictability on prices for our work, so it allows us to post our projects more accurately, and it also gives us the ability to budget well in advance. We have several panels of providers, and this panel of providers is for the supplied concrete or in which must products. We haven't had that panel set before, and this will fit well within our procurement policy. What we've done is, we went out for public tender through vendor panel for suitably qualified companies that have the materials that we were after. We received 10 submissions, six of which meet our expectations. And here in front of you is a report recommending that those six be awarded a place on our panel of providers. There's no guarantee of works, it just gives us certainty on prices when we tender jobs.
Thank you, Mr McCarver. Any questions, councillors? Yes?
Um, a question. I understand one of the previous suppliers to council was a company that owned a centre state, Ashwell, belonging to this. Are they a subsidiary or something of one of these, one of these businesses that are listed, or did they just fail to tender?
So the only companies that tendered are the ones that you will find on page 202. So it's the names of all companies that have tendered. So the company that you refer to has been absorbed by another company, and they are not on the preferred list, so they either haven't tendered, or they haven't been successful.
Thank you.
Mr Councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What happens if council doesn't endorse the recommendation? Just a word to come out.
True question, eh? Nothing changes to our current procurement model. So for every job we have, we need to go and get the other quotation, or we need to put it out for tender. It just doesn't give us any ability to forecast expenditure. This way, we know the rate per square metre of product, we know how fast the product will arrive on site, so all this is predetermined. And sometimes that means that we'll be able to only go to one supplier because they're the only ones that can deliver within a short period of time. So it gives us a lot of certainty.
Great. That was a good answer. Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? There have been none. Can I have a move, please? Please, councillor McPhee. You speak to the motion, councillor McPhee.
I don't need to. But the plan, that answer was actually really good. I didn't expect that. I don't know what I expected. But it is good to see that it's planning and it's for efficiency and financial sustainability and all of what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for or against? We'll go to a vote. Call those in favour. And unanimously. Mayor, councillors, we have several items of policy. Mr Mayor, I have a motion in relation to where you're going here, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you, councillor McPhee. I move that the following five policy reports, being B 20.100 through to 104, be moved into rock, as per section 10.8 for the governance rules.
Thank you, councillor McPhee.
Oh, second, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey.
The fact that they're all policies, yeah, Mr Mayor, and they've gone through our executive agreement and through council assemblies, there's no great change in any of the policies, and they are a long-range simulation of legislation. I think it's appropriate, as I want to run the debate, and I just want to make sure that, and just make sure that councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's existing policies that have been reviewed as required, but look at how council works with the public in terms of private assets and very varied policy, a chain of responsibility for hyper-vehicle movements, how councillors and staff interact as they are councillors and staff, and the limitations there, how we procure items throughout our municipality, depending on the range of what the project and the works are going to be taken, and charter human rights policies as well. That's all.
Any further speakers for those policies against? Thank you. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour of those group of policies passed unanimously.
Mr Mayor, can I now make the recommendation that council adopt those policies, Mr Mayor?
Certainly can.
We'll go to that, because that motion was only here.
Oh.
We just had a motion to adopt them.
Oh, I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. No debate.
All votes said, Mr Mayor.
All votes said, thank you. All those in favour? Asked unanimously.
That brings us to page 234 of the agenda, Mr Mayor.
234 of the agenda, item B 20.105, audit committee. Mr McCarver, you can take it.
Thank you very much. Take the report as read. The council's audit committee met on the 8th of October 2020, and this report summarizes the list of topics that were discussed at that meeting. We recommend that council note the contents of that.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? Question?
The motion is being raised further recommendations.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Second, councillor Jeffrey. You speak to the motion, councillor.
Mr Mayor, the audit committee does play a vital role in the governance of Swan Hill, as in checking crossing the T20. We always make sure that we are being accountable, and it's an independent armband council, with three independent persons and one and two councillors sit on that committee, I being one of them. And I think it does play an important role, and it's good to see that we, or we must have it, so.
Awesome. Councillor McPhee?
I'll take it, Mr Mayor.
Any further speakers? There have been none. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Item B 20.106, 10-year major projects plan. Again, Mr McCarver.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So in here is the list of the 10-year forecasts for the major projects, the capital works for the municipality. It covers the entire municipality for ongoing works, programs to replace and maintain key infrastructure and new developments. The key focus of it is the continued development of the Swan Hill riverfront, aspect of the plan, as well as Robben Vale projects over the next 10 years, significantly increasing the supply of housing in Robben Vale, as well as drainage improvements, and the leisure centre extension and riverbank protection works. There's an allocation for community funding to the next 10 years for projects across all our small townships. There's a large allocation for capital funding for roads over the next 10 years. The priorities of the plan have been assessed on the number of factors, including maintaining and increasing current distance levels, service levels increasing, and statutory imperatives, and compliance with council plans and strategies. The final list of the projects for next year's budget will be determined through the budgeting process, including the rate cap. So we must be mindful of being able to fund these over the 10-year period within our current financial constraints. And that has been factored into the prioritization of anonymous projects within.
Questions, councillors?
I move the motion, Mr Mayor, as per the recommendation. Thank you, and a second, please.
I'll take it.
You speak to the motion, councillor.
Yes, Mr Mayor. The 10-year major projects plan is a requirement of local government to have this. It sits along sort of our 10-year financial plan. As Mr McCarver said, it relates to our budget every year. It is a living document, and things can change as the opportunity for funding and other things become available. And we review this every year, and we're continually reviewing it to make it up to date and current. And obviously, there are things that can be added to it throughout that 10-year process. It doesn't mean we're stuck with that for 10 years. Like I said, it's a living document, and it will continually change over the 10 years, and the priorities will change in that time as well. But we need to plan that area financially and for major projects. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, this is our document, this is council's document, and it is owned by us and by the committee. So within it, for those that are watching, I strongly encourage you to pick it up and in particular, look at the projects that are identified for year one, being next financial year, as well as the next three years, all the way down to 10 years. But mainly, the first year, because they're the projects that we intend to do. We will be undertaking more renewed community planning over the next 12 months. So if you are a member of your community and you want something done or you have an idea, please make sure that you get along to your local representative group, which council can always pass those details on to you, to make sure that you have your say and provide your vision for the community. Because it gets reflected in here, whether individually or within your community plan. So I strongly encourage you to review it, have your say over the next 12 months, and for a whole turnover for these. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion, and against the motion? There have been none. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Item B 20.107, council delegates to outside organizations.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council makes appointments to various external organizations and community groups. We do this every year, and it assists council in working closely with the various organizations, primarily the volunteers within our community. You have within the agenda on page 298, or beginning of page 298, a list of the various committees on which we are represented. It also explains who the delegated councillor or officer was in the previous year, and it makes a recommendation in the final column in relation to delegation of councillors, or the appropriate delegation of councillors for the coming 12 months. So, Mr Mayor, happy to answer any questions, but recommending the council appoints councillors to external organizations as shown in the appendix to this report.
Thank you, Mr McPhee. Any questions, councillors? There have been none. I believe it was.
Oh.
Mister Councillor McPhee. Second, councillor Jeffrey.
Yep.
You speak to the motion, councillor McPhee.
No, we've been through this, so there's no reason to speak to it.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey.
That's fine, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Further speakers for?
I'll just say one thing, Mr Mayor. In relation to this, councillor Jeffrey, you came up with a good ideas religious process, where there will be a camera out for all councillors who can attend any event, any of those things, as an interesting party as well, if they're allowed.
Further speakers?
Mr Mayor, I'm more informed of reading that work has commenced on that suggestion, and Sharon's done to create that.
It's already on our computers. It's fantastic. It will go to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Okay, section C, decisions which need action gratification. Mr McCarver?
The first report, C 20.21, is a report on the use of the council seal since council last met. The variation of lease, section 173 agreements, and other planning and subdivision matters. So there are five items on which the seal's been used, and they're reported there. So asking the council, note the actions of signing and sealing and using the seal under delegation authority.
Thank you, Mr McPhee. Any questions, councillors? There have been no questions. Can I have a move, please? Move, councillor McCarver.
Remove the motion as recommended.
Thank you. And second, councillor McPhee. You wish to speak to the motion, councillor McCarver?
No.
Any other speakers? No. Put it to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Item D 20.13, notices of motion, Swan Hill Hospital, councillor McPhee.
It is a good first.
Skip one.
Sorry.
Your case doesn't look like a lot, though.
There we go. Sorry. Right, councillor, wrong motion, alignment of Swan Hill Bridge. Item D 20.12.
Yeah, well, I move as per the agenda there, Mr Mayor, that the motion I moved as point 1.2.
Point 1.2.
Oh, second.
Seconded by councillor Jeffrey. You speak, councillor McPhee.
Not going through the preamble, I recognize that in the report there, Mr Mayor. But this is, I've always been waiting for a bridge for a very long time, well before I even arrived in Swan Hill. And over 40 years I've been waiting for a bridge. We've just recently gone through some consultation and a lot of community engagement in relation to looking at an alignment, a direct alignment, basically where the bridge is now. And it's, I believe, it's been taken on favorably by the community. Both sides of the river, the Murray River Council and our council, are supporting this proposal, if it can become viable. And the fact that we've got $6 million of federal funding sitting there to build a bridge, it's disappointing when Transport for New South Wales comes out and says it's going to take two years to finalize this thing. I think they need to stop procrastinating, the bureaucrats in Transport for New South Wales, and get on, design this bridge so it can be built as soon as possible for the economic benefit of both Swan Hill and the Murray River Council in the New South Wales side. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to support this motion. I think, given the two-year timeframe identified by Transport for New South Wales, I think it's really important that we get this, all the engineering, all the bridges signed, et cetera, and everything signed off before 2022, which I'm pretty sure is our next state election. The bridge is always a topic of issue when it comes to council, state, and federal election time. So this would be the perfect opportunity to have something finalized, that we could get funding through any political candidate running that might use to run for a band or area, whatever that may be. But that two years to get it approved is too long. I should be able to get off and done it in 12 months, Mr Mayor. So happy to support us, as recommended there, by councillor McPhee. Thank you.
Okay. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Or against the motion? Or would you like to close, councillor?
No.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Now, item D 20.13, Swan Hill Hospital, councillor McPhee.
Yeah, I move the motion as recommended, as Mr Jeffrey, Mr Mayor.
Oh, second.
Yes, thanks, councillor Jeffrey. You speak to the motion, councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I've been fortunate with a chair of a group of people that was formed back in 2018, advocating for funding for a new hospital for Swan Hill. We are well overdue. Once again, we have been overlooked in the state budget, funding for our hospital. It's disappointing that we get no made, continually overlooked. The municipal health, the previous mayor, Mayor McCarpus, has resigned from parliament, and we have a new health minister, Mr Martin Foley. I think it's appropriate that he has the opportunity to come and see firsthand the condition of our hospital. Right throughout this whole process, we've always been very appreciative of the work the staff do in the building, but it's just not good, it's not appropriate. The standard is not good enough. We are entitled to good healthcare, irrespective of where you are in the state. And the state government, it's not the Melbourne government, it's the state government, should be looking at funding regional rural hospitals. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll take it. I'll take it, Mr Mayor.
Any further speakers? Yes, councillor?
As we've discussed previously, we are a major service center for healthcare in our region, and incredibly important to the people who live here. There's nothing more important than the health and wellbeing of one's family and friends, and our hospital is the center of that. So it's so important that we keep advocating for improvements in healthcare in our region and in our town. You get used to the house you live in, you get used to the place where you work, but when you visit to other places and see the facilities that they do have, you realize that our facility is not modern, and it is not, does not have the full range of things that other places do. Of course, the most important thing is the work that goes on inside it, but it will be a very, very important step for Swan Hill to get an improvement.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers for the motion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Motives of motion, item B 20.14, ladies and council, chamber. Councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, this is, I'll move the motion first. Is that what you want to do? Move the motion, please.
Yes, can I have a second, please? Yeah, can I have a second please? Here's councillor McKay. You should speak to the motion councillor.
Really quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, it just became apparent, uh, when we were in here doing inductions the other day and running through all policies and procedures and things that surround it, that there is only one of the Australian flags and on all public buildings, at least externally these days, uh, three Australian flags have flown, being the Australian, the Aboriginal and the Torres Strait Islander one. And I would like to move that we do the same in addition to the Swan Hill Rural City council flag within the council chamber.
Thank you, councillor Ben. Any further speakers for the motion?
Yes, I congratulate Jade Benham, our councillor, on, uh, suggesting this great, uh, change to our policy. Uh, we are very fortunate and I am very proud to live in a municipality with the largest Aboriginal population in the state. And, um, the more that we honor that and recognize that, the better. Symbols are symbols and they are important and this is an important symbolic thing. And it's also important that they're followed up with these substantive changes that we need to make to improve health, wellbeing and outcomes in our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? And then, uh, you wish to close, councillor Ben?
I don't think I need to, but it is, as well as we're setting community visions as per the new local government act and the ten year major project plan, it's also important to pay attention to the, to the smaller details, which, as councillor McKay said, can have quite significant, um, impact on a, on a smaller level, I suppose, but, um, but greater significance, symbolic significance, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ben. Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Item B twenty point one five, A double road network investigation. Councillor Ben?
Thank you, I'd like to move the motion first. Yeah.
Um, there's an amendment to what?
Oh, yes.
Do you have an amendment?
I do have an amendment, sorry, to the one that is printed, um, in your agenda. The amendment now reads, or the motion now reads, council investigate and report to be brought to council to establish a heavy vehicle and higher mass limit road network, particularly in the Robben Vale irrigation district, Weeman and Warrenane areas as a matter of urgency.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? So is there a second about councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, it, it's become apparent, I've banged on a lot in this meeting in particular, I do it often, uh, how quickly, uh, the irrigation industry in this area is booming and it is. The roads are staying the same size, the trucks and the transport are getting bigger, uh, and there are more of them, especially now considering the failure of the Murray Darling Basin rail project. Um, it's important that we allow our growers and producers that are seen not only Australia but the world to efficiently get their crops to market and to ports, yes, it would be easier with a rail network, if we have the ability to expedite quick permits to get heavier vehicle loads. And I won't go through the whole preamble, you can read about, uh, axle loads and et cetera, et cetera. Um, but it is important that we can make things easier to get, uh, trucks and transport into farm and to market as quickly as possible. It's one of those things that common sense should prevail, particularly when axle loads might be the same. Um, but it definitely needs to be investigated as a matter of, matter of urgency.
Thank you, councillor Ben. Yes, councillor McPhee, you should speak.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, it's, um, the report initially says A double road networks, but the heavy vehicle industry is changing rapidly as to the accumulation of vehicles into the future. And I think it's not just about the agricultural industry, uh, the, um, the cropping and the irrigated farmers. It's also the dryland farmers. Machinery is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. We've got to start establishing roads now to get the farmers able to use roads, whether it be a, we don't have all roads for these, uh, this access, but we need to have a system of roads, a network that will allow them to get to their farm and get out onto the main highways where those big vehicles should be and not having to travel through all our roads in town, in, um, our towns. So I think it's important that we do look at this. Rail ideal, ideally is the answer in the long run, but even then, you're still going to want to get your produce to the right. So the trucks are going to be becoming bigger and bigger for efficiency, so we, we need to look at that. There can be purpose-built vehicles into the future as well. And it's not only traffic traveling down from here to the ports. We've had solar farm, we've had trucks coming up, bringing loads and loads of solar panels. So it works both ways, both from Melbourne and to Melbourne. We need better access for our suppliers. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers?
Classic question for clarity, Mr Mayor. The motion as it's written, would that bring a report back for the whole municipality, not just the four or five areas? I just want to make sure that that's how it's interpreted. It'll be a better work for the whole municipality. Yeah, no, that's fine.
I think the wording, but that's what I think it says.
Yeah, it just says particularly.
Particularly, yeah. That's why I'm making sure that it's not, look at those four areas, I mean, it's at the whole municipality.
So any further speakers for the motion and against, you know, the clause councillor?
I don't think I need to. It's all written there in the preamble, um, but it is something that needs to be. We've got a bit of catching up to do as far as heavy vehicles go on our roads, um, so this is something that needs to be looked at.
Thank you, councillor Ben. We're going to go to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? Asked unanimously. Yes, that includes section D. Uh, section E, foreshadowed items, so councillor McKay has foreshadowed, um, two items, I believe. Uh, any further foreshadowed items? There'd be none. Section F, urgent items not included in the agenda. Are there any urgent items not included in the agenda? There are none. Uh, section G, do you consider and order our councillor reports? Who's going first to vote?
I got this. I haven't had any reporting. But I wish you all a merry Christmas. It happened here.
Thank you. Are there any other items to add?
I've got a couple, um, obviously we've had the councillor inductions. We've had, all the meetings that we've had, I think in the last month have been Christmas meetings, over meals. So I have made an effort to go to Reba particularly and, uh, Robben Vale College, uh, school council last time for the year and a tour of the library, which opens while we will be, uh, inactive over the summer period, but that's really exciting. Okay.
Awesome. Uh, councillor King?
Uh, I attended the Rail Freight Alliance Zoom meeting, uh, earlier in the month, but there was, again, really nothing significant to report, just introductions of, um, new councillors, new members to that, to that committee.
Thank you, councillor.
Yeah, it took a lot, Mr Mayor, as I say, a lot of it was booked Zoom. Um, one of the meetings I went to was the audit committee, which was, um, recorded during our meeting here. And as of next year, hopefully we'll be able to get out to our community meetings a bit more often, rather than that will try and meet them by phone, I should think so. And whilst COVID, we're going to be out and be out a lot more this year, thank you.
Um, along with other councillors, we visited, toured Pyeongle and Robben Vale on our way to the assembly. I think that was last week, wasn't it? And, um, I went to the Pyeongle Improvement Group meeting, the first for some time, given COVID and also the Nye District Action Group general meeting.
Thank you. Um, not that, sorry, councillor McKay. Um, I remember a group of councils, uh, Zoom, um, meeting with Billy and Rosio regarding the Cranglink, um, which was a major announcement for our municipality and also to SF, that is to, to get more solar energy out of the, uh, um, out of the municipality and into the grid. Uh, Murray River Council's meeting also, um, we met with Luke Wilson, Cross Border Commissioner and, uh, Modern Valley Waste Resource Recovery Group, uh, which was an induction meeting and they're, uh, uh, appears on the last man standing there, it's all new councillors on board there, so that'd be an interesting example. Uh, not that, close. Over to me. Um, we now conclude the public section, um, meeting.
Motion to close the, this.
We will need to, um, need a motion to go into in camera, please.
Move the motion, Mr Mayor, to lump it into camera.
Seconded. Condition, the seconded by councillor Jeffrey. All those in favour? Okay. Um, lights stay safe.